Greetings, respected guests, and welcome to the Washington Center for the Performing Arts. Today's event is not intended to be partisan in any way. Sponsors for this event include Ole Arts Magazine, Bowser's Books, the Northwest Playwrights Alliance, TC Media, and the Washington Center for the Performing Arts. Over the course of the day, a variety of readers from our local government and community will be reading thirty minutes of materials from the document known as the Mueller Report. Each reader has been asked to present the material without commentary, and transitions between speakers will be very brief. When a reader comes to a section of text that has been redacted, they will indicate so by ringing a bell. We hope you find this information useful and enjoyable.
Maylock stated to investigators that beginning in or about August 2016, he and Corsi had multiple FaceTime discussions about WikiLeaks. He had made a connection to Assange and that the hacked emails of John Podesta would be released prior to Election Day and would be helpful to the Trump campaign. In one conversation in or around August or September 2016, Corsi told Maylock that the releases of the Podesta emails were coming, after which we were going to be in the driver's seat. D. WikiLeaks' October 7, 2016 Release of Stolen Podesta Emails On October 7, 2016, four days after the Assange press conference, The Washington Post published an Access Hollywood video that captured the comments by candidate Trump some years earlier and that was expected to adversely affect the campaign. Less than an hour after the video's publication, WikiLeaks released the first set of emails stolen by the GRU from the account of Clinton campaign chairman John Podesta. Corsi said that because he had no direct means of communicating with WikiLeaks, he told members of the news site WND who were participating in a conference call with him that day to reach Assange immediately. Corsi claimed that the pressure was enormous and recalled telling the conference call the Access Hollywood tape was coming. Corsi stated that he was convinced that his efforts had caused WikiLeaks to release the emails when they did. In late November 2018 interview, Corsi stated that he had thought he had told people on a WND conference call about the forthcoming tape and had sent out a tweet asking whether anyone would contact Assange, but then said that maybe he had done nothing. The Office investigated Corsi's allegations about the event of September 7, 2016, but found little corroboration for his allegations about the day. However, the phone records themselves do not indicate that a conversation with any of the reporters who broke the Access Hollywood story and the Office had not otherwise been able to identify the substance of the conversation. However, the Office had not identified any conference call participant or anyone who spoke with Corsi that day, who says that they received non-public information about the tape from Corsi or acknowledged having contacted a member of WikiLeaks on October 7, 2016 after a conversation with Corsi. Section E. Donald Trump Jr. Interaction with WikiLeaks Donald Trump Jr. had a direct electronic communication with WikiLeaks during the campaign period. On September 20, 2016, an individual named Jason Fishbine sent WikiLeaks the password for an un-launched website focused on Trump's unprecedented and dangerous ties to Russia: putintrump.org. WikiLeaks publicly tweeted "Let's bomb Iraq: Progress for America PAC to launch" putintrump.org at 9:30 a.m. Oops, PW is Putin Trump, putintrump.org. Several hours later, WikiLeaks sent a Twitter direct message to Donald Trump Jr. "A PAC-run anti-Trump site, putintrump.org, is about to launch. The PAC is recycled pro-Iraq war PAC. We have guessed the password. It is Putin Trump. See About for who is behind it. Any comments?" Several hours later, Trump Jr. emailed a variety of senior campaign staff. "Guys, I got a weird Twitter DM from WikiLeaks. See below. I tried the password and it works, and the About section they reference contains the pic in terms of who is behind it. Not sure if this is anything, but it seems like it's really WikiLeaks asking me, as I follow them, and it is a DM. Do you know the people mentioned and what the conspiracy they are looking for could be? These are just screenshots, but it's fully built-out page claiming to be a PAC. Let me know your thoughts if we want to look into it." Trump Jr. attached a screenshot of the About page for the un-launched site putintrump.org. The next day after the website had launched publicly, Trump Jr. sent a direct message to WikiLeaks off the record. "I don't know who that is, but I'll ask around. Thanks." On October 3, 2016, WikiLeaks sent another direct message to Trump Jr. asking you guys to help disseminate a link alleging candidate Clinton had advocated using a drone to target Julian Assange. Trump Jr. responded that he already had done so and asked, "What's behind this Wednesday leak I keep reading about?" WikiLeaks did not respond. On October 12, 2016, WikiLeaks wrote again that it was great to see you and your dad talking about our publications. Strongly suggest your dad tweets this link if he mentions us: wlsearch tk. WikiLeaks wrote that the link would help Putin or help Trump in digging through leaked emails and stated, "We just released Podesta emails, Part IV." Two days later, Trump Jr. publicly tweeted the wlsearch tk link. Two. Another Potential Campaign Interest in Russian Hacked Materials Throughout 2016, the Trump campaign expressed interest in Hillary Clinton's private email server and whether approximately 30,000 emails from that server had in fact been permanently destroyed as reported by the media. Several individuals associated with the campaign were in contact in 2016 about various efforts to obtain the missing Clinton emails and other stolen material in support of the Trump campaign. Some of these contacts were met with skepticism and nothing came from them. Others were pursued to some degree. The investigation did not find evidence that the Trump campaign recovered any such Clinton emails or that these contacts were part of a coordinated effort between Russia and the Trump campaign. A. Henry Okianski, aka Henry Greenberg In the spring of 2016, Trump campaign adviser Michael Caputo learned through a Florida-based Russian business partner that another Florida-based Russian, Henry Okianski, who also went by the name Henry Greenberg, claimed to have information pertaining to Hillary Clinton. Caputo notified Roger Stone and brokered communication between Stone and Okianski. Okianski and Stone set up a May 2016 in-person meeting. Okianski was accompanied to the meeting by Alexei Rassen, a Ukrainian associate involved in Florida real estate. At the meeting, Rassen offered to sell Stone derogatory information on Clinton that Rassen claimed to have obtained while working for Clinton. Rassen claimed to possess financial statements demonstrating Clinton's involvement in money laundering with Rassen's companies. According to Okianski, Stone asked if the amounts in question totaled millions of dollars, but was told it was closer to hundreds of thousands. Stone refused the offer, stating that Trump would not pay for opposition research. Okianski claimed to the Office that Raskin's motivation was financial. According to Okianski, Rassen had tried unsuccessfully to shop the Clinton information around to other interested parties, and Okianski would receive a cut of the information who was sold. Rassen is noted in public source documents as a director and/or registered agent for a number of Florida companies, none of which appear to be connected with Clinton. The Office found no other evidence that Rassen worked for Clinton or any Clinton-related entities. In their statements to investigators, Okianski and Caputo had contradictory recollections about the meeting. Okianski claimed that Caputo accompanied Stone to the meeting and provided an introduction, whereas Caputo did not tell us that he had attended and claimed he was never told what information Okianski offered. Caputo also stated that he was unaware Okianski sought to be paid for the information until Stone told him after the fact. The Office did not locate Rassen in the United States, although the Office confirmed Rassen had been issued a Florida driver's license. The Office otherwise was unable to determine the content and origin of the information he purportedly offered to Stone. Finally, the investigation did not identify evidence or connection between the outreach or the meeting and Russian interference efforts. B. Campaign Efforts to Obtain Deleted Clinton Emails After candidate Trump stated on July 27, 2016 that he hoped Russia would find the 30,000 emails that are missing, Trump asked individuals affiliated with the campaign to find the deleted Clinton emails. Michael Flynn, who would later serve as National Security Advisor in the Trump administration, recalled that Trump made this request repeatedly, and Flynn subsequently contacted multiple people in an effort to obtain the emails. Barbara Ledeen and Peter Smith were among the people contacted by Flynn. Ledeen, a longtime Senate staffer who had previously sought the Clinton emails, provided updates to Flynn about her efforts throughout the summer of 2016. Smith, an investment adviser who was an active in Republican politics, also attempted to locate and obtain the deleted Clinton emails. Ledeen offered her efforts to obtain the Clinton emails before Flynn's request as early as December 2015. On December 3, 2015, she emailed Smith a proposal to obtain the emails stating, "Here's the proposal I briefly mentioned to you. The person I described to you would be happy to talk with you either in person or over the phone. The person can get the emails, which (1) were classified and (2) were purloined by our enemies. That would demonstrate what needs to be demonstrated." Attached to the email was a 25-page proposal stating that Clinton email server was in all likelihood breached long ago and that the Chinese, Russians, and Iranian intelligence services could reassemble the server's email content. The proposal called for a three-phase approach. The first two phases consisted of open-source analysis. The third phase consisted of checking with certain intelligence sources that have access through liaison work and various foreign services to determine if any of those services had gotten to the server. The proposal noted, "Even a single email was recovered and the providence of that email was foreign service, it would be catastrophic to the Clinton campaign." Smith forwarded the email to two colleagues and wrote, "We can discuss to whom it should be referred." On December 16 of 2015, Smith informed Ledeen that he declined to participate in her initiative. According to one of Smith's business associates, Smith believed Ledeen's initiative was not viable at that time. Just weeks after Trump's July 2016 request to find the Clinton emails, however, Smith tried to locate and obtain the emails himself. He created a company, raised tens of thousands of dollars, and recruited security experts and business associates. Smith made claims to others involved in the effort and those from who he sought funding that he was in contact with hackers with ties and affiliations to Russia, who had access to the emails, and that his efforts were coordinated with the Trump campaign. On August 28, 2016, Smith sent an email from an encrypted account with the subject Secretary Clinton's Unsecured Private Email Server to an undisclosed list of recipients, including campaign co-chairman Sam Clovis. The email stated that Smith was just finishing two days of sensitive meetings here in DC, which involved groups to poke and probe on the above. It was clear that Clinton's home-based unprotected server was hacked with ease by both state-related players and private mercenaries. Parties with varying interests are circling to release ahead of the election. On September 2, 2016, Smith directed a business associate to establish KLS Research LLC in furtherance of his search for the deleted Clinton emails. One of the purposes of the KLS research was to manage the funds Smith raised in support of his initiative. KLS Research received over $30,000 during the presidential campaign, although Smith represented that he raised even more money. Smith recruited multiple people for his initiative, including security experts to search for and authenticate the emails. In early September 2016, as part of his recruitment and fundraising effort, Smith circulated a document stating that his initiative was in coordination with the Trump campaign to the extent permitted as an independent expenditure organization. The document listed multiple individuals affiliated with the Trump campaign, including Flynn, Clovis, Bannon, and Kellyanne Conway. The investigation established that Smith communicated with at least Flynn and Clovis about his search for the deleted Clinton emails, but the Office did not identify evidence that any of the listed individuals initiated or directed Smith's efforts. In September 2016, Smith and Ledeen got back in touch with each other about their respective efforts. Ledeen wrote to Smith, "Wondering if you had some more detailed reports or memos or other data that you could share, because we have come a long way in our efforts since we last visited. We would need as much technical discussion as possible so we could marry it against the new data we have found and then could share it back to you, your eyes only." Ledeen claimed to have a trove of emails from what he described as the dark web that purported to be the deleted Clinton emails. Ledeen wanted to authenticate the emails and solicit contributions to fund that effort. Eric Price provided funding to hire a tech adviser to ascertain the authenticity of the emails. According to Prince, the tech adviser determined that the emails were not authentic. Ledeen claimed to have obtained a trove of emails from what she described as the dark web. A backup of Smith's computer contained two files that had been downloaded from WikiLeaks that were originally attached to emails received by John Podesta. The files on Smith's computer had creation dates of October 2, 2016, which was prior to the date of their release by WikiLeaks. Forensics examination, however, established that the creation date did not reflect when the files were downloaded to Smith's computer. It appears the creation date was when WikiLeaks staged the document for release, as discussed in Volume 1, Section 3, B3 dot C. The investigation did not otherwise identify evidence that Smith obtained the files before their release by WikiLeaks. Smith continued to send emails to an undisclosed recipient list about Clinton's deleted emails until shortly before the election. For example, on October 28, 2016, Smith wrote there was a tug-of-war going on within WikiLeaks over its planned release in the next few days, and that WikiLeaks has maintained that it will save its best revelations for last. Under the theory, this allows little time for response prior to the US election, November 8. An attachment to the email claimed that WikiLeaks would release all 33,000 deleted emails by November 1. No emails obtained from Clinton's server were subsequently released. Smith drafted multiple emails stating or imitating that he was in contact with Russian hackers. For example, in one such email, Smith claimed in August 2016, KLS Research had organized meetings with parties who had access to the deleted Clinton emails, including parties with ties and affiliations to Russia. The investigation did not identify evidence that any such meetings occurred. Associates and security experts who worked with Smith on the initiative did not believe that Smith was in contact with Russian hackers and were aware of no such connection. The investigation did not establish that Smith was in contact with the Russian hackers or that Smith, Ledeen, or other individuals in touch with the Trump campaign ultimately obtained the deleted Clinton emails. In sum, the investigation established that GRU hacked into email accounts of persons affiliated with the Clinton campaign, as well as the computers of the DNC and DCCC. The GRU then exfiltrated data related to the 2016 election from these accounts and computers and disseminated that data through fictitious online personas, DC Leaks and Gucifer 2.0, and later through WikiLeaks. The investigation also established that the Trump campaign displayed interest in the WikiLeaks releases and that, as explained in Volume 1, Section VB, the evidence was sufficient to support computer intrusion and other charges against GRU officers for their role Four. Russian Government Links to and Contacts With the Trump Campaign The Office identified multiple contacts linked, in the words of the appointment order, between Trump campaign officials and individuals with ties to the Russian government. The Office investigated whether those contacts constituted a third avenue of attempted Russian interference with or influence on the 2016 presidential campaign. In particular, the investigation examined whether those contacts involved or resulted in coordination or a conspiracy with the Trump campaign and Russia, including with respect to Russia providing assistance to the campaign in exchange for any sort of favorable treatment in the future. Based on the available information, the investigation did not establish such coordination. This section describes the principal links between the Trump campaign and the individuals with ties to the Russian government, including some contacts with campaign officials or associates that have been publicly reported to involve Russian contacts. Each subsection begins with an overview of the Russian contact at issue and then describes in detail the relevant facts, which are generally presented in chronological order, beginning with the early months of the campaign and extending through post-election transition period. A. Campaign Period, September 15, 2015 to November 8, 2016 Russian government-connected individuals and media entities began showing interest in Trump's campaign in the months after he announced his candidacy in June 2015. Because Trump's status as a public figure at the time was attributable in large part to his prior business and entertainment dealings, this Office investigated whether a business contact with Russia-linked individuals and entities during the campaign period, the Trump Tower Moscow Project, see Volume 1, Section 4, A1, led to involved coordination or election assistance. Outreach from individuals with ties to Russia continued in the spring and summer of 2016 when Trump was moving forward and eventually becoming the Republican nominee for president. As set forth below, the Office also evaluated a series of links during this period. Outreach to two of Trump's then-recently-named foreign policy advisers included a representation that Russia had dirt on Clinton in the form of thousands of emails, Volume 1, Sections 4, A2, and 4, A3, dealings with DC-based think-tank and specializes in Russia and has connections with its government, Volume 1, Section 4, A4. A Meeting with Trump Tower Between the Campaign and a Russian Lawyer Promising Dirt on Candidate Clinton That Was Part of Russia and Its Government Support for Trump, Volume 1, Section 4, A5. Events in the Russian National Convention, Volume 1, Section 4, A6. Post-Convention Contacts Between Trump Campaign Officials and Russia's Ambassador to the United States, Volume 1, Section 4, A7. And the Contacts Through Campaign Chairman Paul Manford, Who Had Previously Worked For A Russian Oligarch And A Pro-Russian Political Party In The Ukraine, Volume 1, Section 4, A8. One. Trump Tower Moscow Project The Trump Organization had pursued completed projects outside the United States as part of its real estate portfolio. Some projects have involved the acquisition and ownership through subsidiary corporate structure of property. In other cases, the Trump Organization has executed licensing deals with real estate developers and management companies, often local to the country where the project was located. Between at least 2013 and 2016, the Trump Organization explored a similar licensing deal in Russia involving the construction of a Trump-branded property in Moscow. The project, commonly referred to as Trump Tower Moscow or Trump Moscow Project, anticipated a combination of commercial hotel and residential properties all within the same building. Between 2013 and June 2016, several employees of the Trump Organization, including then-president of the organization Donald J. Trump, pursued a Moscow deal with several Russian counterparts. From the fall of 2015 into the middle of 2016, Michael Cohen spearheaded the Trump's Organization pursuit of the Trump Tower Moscow Project, including by reporting on the project's status to candidate Trump and other executives in the Trump Organization. A. Trump Tower Moscow Venture With the Crocus Group, 2013 to 2014 The Trump Organization and the Crocus Group, a Russian real estate conglomerate owned and operated and controlled by Aris Aglirov, began discussing a Russian-based real estate project shortly after the conclusion of the 2013 Miss Universe Pageant in Moscow. Donald J. Trump Jr. served as the primary negotiator on behalf of the Trump Organization. Emin Agarlov, son of Aris Agarlov and Iraqi Aykavides, represented the Crocus Group during negotiations with the occasional assistance of Robert Goldstone. In December 2013, Cavilades and Trump Jr. negotiated and signed preliminary terms of an agreement for the Trump Tower Moscow Project. On December 23, 2013, after discussions with Donald J. Trump, the Trump Organization agreed to accept an arrangement whereby the Organization received a flat 3.5% commission on all sales with no licensing fees or incentives. The parties negotiated a letter of intent during January and February 2014. From January 2014 through November 2014, the Trump Organization and Crocus Group discussed development plans for the Moscow Project. Sometime before January 24, 2014, the Crocus Group sent the Trump Organization a proposal for a 800-unit, 194-meter building to be constructed at an Agarlov-owned site in Moscow called Crocus City, which had also been the site of the Miss Universe Pageant. In February 2014, Ivanka Trump met with Emin Agarlov and toured the Crocus City site during a visit to Moscow. From March 2014 through July 2014, the groups discussed design standards and other architectural elements. For example, in July 2014, the members of the Trump Organization sent Crocus Group counterparties questions about the demographics of these prospective buyers. In the Crocus City area, the development of neighboring parcels in Crocus City and concepts for redesigning portions of the building. In August 2014, the Trump Organization requested specifications for competing Marriott-branded tower being built in Crocus City. Beginning in September 2014, the Trump Organization stopped responding in a timely fashion to correspondence and proposals from the Crocus Group. Communications between the two groups continued through November 2014 with decreasing frequency. What appears to be the last communication is dated November 24, 2014. The project appears not to have developed past the planning stage and no construction B. Communications With IC Expert-Investment Company and Grigori Ristiladais, Summer and Fall 2015 In the late summer of 2015, Trump Organization received a new inquiry about pursuing a Trump Tower project in Moscow. In approximately September 2015, Felix Satter, a New York-based real estate adviser, contacted Michael Cohen, then-executive Michael Cohen, then-executive Vice President of the Trump Organization and Special Counsel to Donald J. Trump. Satter had previously worked with the Trump Organization and advised it on a number of domestic and international projects. Satter had explored the possibility of Trump Tower projects in Moscow while working with the Trump Organization and therefore knew of the organization's general interest in completing a deal there. Satter had also served as an informal agent of the Trump Organization in Moscow previously and had accompanied Ivanka Trump and Donald Trump Jr. to Moscow in the mid-2000s. Satter contacted Cohen on behalf of IC Expert Investment Company, IC Expert, a Russian real estate development corporation controlled by Andre Vladimirovich Rosov.